Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Canton City Council. If everyone could please turn your cell phones to vibrate, and we are encouraging social distancing and masks back in council chambers. With a Corin being present, the Chair calls this meeting of Canton City Council to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Smuckler.
Here.
Babcock.
Here.
Schulman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Skaglion.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Mariel.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Morris. Twelve present, Mr. President.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Ward Seven Councilmember John Mariel. If you would all please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
We have been endowed with many abilities and talents to be used to enhance the dignity of our city and the people who live in it. May we never abuse our elected commissions, but use our gifts for the good of those we serve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Member Mariel. We are now under Agenda Corrections and Changes. Leader Smuckler.
Mr. President, I move Rule 22A be suspended to add second reading of ordinances six through twelve to this evening's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend Rule 22A to add second readings to ordinances six through twelve to this evening's agenda. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Schulman.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris. Twelve yes, Mr. President.
The motion carries, and ordinances six through twelve are a legal part of your agenda. We are now under public hearings, and we have no public hearings for this evening. We are now under old business, and there is no old business for this evening. We are now under public speaks, and we have no speakers for this evening. We are now under informal resolutions, and we have five for this evening. Leader Smuckler, would you please read Informal Resolution 24 by title?
Congratulating Clerk Dockerty on his retirement and commending him for his years of service to the City of Canton.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 24.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Informal Resolution Number 24. Are there any remarks?
Mr.
Majority Leader.
I'd like to read this for the record. We sort of decided that, uh, Member Dockerty reading it would be a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Clerk.
Whereas Canton City Clerk of Council David Dockerty has been a lifelong resident of Canton and has served his community in many significant ways. And whereas during the twenty-seven years he served as Ward Six Councilman for the City of Canton, Davis established the annual Feed the Needy picnic, which under his excellent supervision and guidance continued to grow for over twenty years. He was instrumental in many community development projects such as Mahoning Road Plaza, the Mahoning Road Corridor Project, as Chris Smith refers to Phase Forty, and the renovation of -- and that's not in there, by the way. And the renovation of City Hall and the City Council Office itself. And whereas, following his successful career as a councilman, David Dockerty was then elected as Clerk of Canton City Council on January first, 2017. And whereas, from day one, David understood the importance of a healthy work environment, ensured that his staff was comfortable, providing them all with the necessities required to perform their duties to the best of their abilities. He also encouraged his staff to care for themselves, reminded them to use their vacation, and allotted break times. And whereas David was always supportive of updates and innovations to keep and increase the efficiency of council office to better serve the public as well as other city departments. And whereas, in March of 2020, the people of the United States as well as the entire world fell victim to COVID-19, a virus of pandemic proportions, business and government agencies were required to function under a whole new set of CDC guidelines, which of course included council office. And whereas Clerk Dockerty, having a background in safety and security measures, efficiently and effectively guided and maintained the functions of council office and safety led us through the worst year in recent history. And whereas, now after nearly thirty-two years of devoted service to the City of Canton, David has decided to retire effective September first, 2021, a decision well deserved. Now therefore be resolved that the members of Canton City Council do hereby go on record congratulating Clerk of Council David R. Dockerty on his retirement and commending him for his superb leadership and dedication to the City of Canton. Um, I think that, um, it's always me that takes you through a walk in history, but I think we need a vote first, and then I'm going to take you through that walk in history.
You are correct. Are there any additional remarks? Hearing none by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries.
Well, if you'd have voted no, you'd have got yelled at like a number of other of the city officials have, so.
And Resolution Number 24 is adopted.
Clerk, or Mr. President.
Majority Leader.
Yeah, I would just like to say this, um, I met Dave a lot of years ago. We walked door to door together. We golfed together. We ate together. And I know he got one of these on the way out as a councilman. But I think, um, for the service that he's provided for this community, and I've always said this, and I'll say it again, as Ward Councilman, this was the standard to look up to. And if you do your job like Dave did his, you never have any problems. So I would say any councilman that follows him, any councilman that participates down here from another ward, any other elected official, they've got a lot of work to keep up with him, and they have a lot of work to follow him. And I think that it's more than fit to congratulate Dave for his retirement and hoping him all the best in the future. Um, Dave did not want to go up to the podium. Um, he's probably saving that for the State Representative West, but, um, I know there's another presentation this evening.
Thank you so much, uh, President, to the Mayor, to the City Council, and to our esteemed retiree, Dave Dockerty. Dave Dockerty is retiring again. I thought we went through this once. Twice. Wait a minute, this is the third time, right? Three times a charm. But one of the greatest things about being a legislator, whether you are on the city level, the state level, or the federal level, you have the opportunity to be the voice for the people. That is an immense opportunity, and it's also a wonderful challenge, something that Dave did very well at. Coming on to council, I will say, and seeing Dave, uh, this red-faced man who liked to yell a lot when I first came on, I was like, is this, this man is the man I'm supposed to emulate? You know, because I don't turn red. I turn black. But, but Dave, for some strange reason, was able to be very strong in his position. When it came down to Mahoney Road, when it came down to Feed the Needy, when it came down to anything that Dave was involved in, he put a hundred and ten percent in. And that's why I think when Bill said, is someone to emulate, it's very true. Because he took Mahoney Road, a plaza that was vacant, that was decimated, and changed it into a beautiful plaza. And then not only did that, but also was able to redo the roads and the sidewalks, uh, around it. Now, mind you, I was a Ward Two Councilman, and I'm sitting there saying, how do I do that? How do I get that done? I need to get on Capitol. I need to get on this. But no, it was more than that. He got the community involved. He got the community the voice behind it, and that's what made it so wonderful. So today, I'm honored to be here to present Dave with a state proclamation from the General Assembly. On behalf of the Members of the House of Representatives for the Hundred Thirty-Fourth General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to pay tribute to Dave Dockerty on your more than thirty years of exemplary service to the City of Canton. For more than three decades, you have worked diligently to keep Canton community vital, safe, and financially strong. Commencing your distinguished tenure as Ward Six Representative to the City of Ca-- Kent-- excuse me, from the City Council in 1990, you have most recently held the Office of Clerk of Council. In all of your endeavors, you have demonstrated admirable, responsible, and dedicated citizenship. Indeed, you have played an instrumental role in improving public trust through constructive and honest dialogue, transparency, and collaboration. And you have displayed exceptional skill and enthusiasm, that's the red face I was talking about, of which you can be proud. Clearly, you have distinguished yourself as a conscientious public servant. Time and again, you have approached difficult decisions and shouldered responsibilities with confidence, and you have earned the esteem of all those who you have worked. Over the years, you have been instrumental in the success of numerous, numerous meaningful initiatives, including the Feed the Needy Program, local infrastructure improvements, and Community Policing Project. And you've helped to shape a better future for the area. As you reflect on your years of service, you have the satisfaction of knowing that your record of personal achievement will stand a hallmark for others to emulate. Thus, with this great pleasure, I commend you and your contribution to the City of Canton, and salute you as one of Ohio's finest citizens. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Also, coming, I'm just coming back from the unemployment town hall, and so Dave can actually go over there for a file on employment when this is all over.
Appreciate it.
We could do a roast. I'll agree with Councilman Morris.
Mr. President, may I? Mr. Dockerty, I went from the point of going, oh my God, this man is crazy, to, oh my God, I love this guy. I was so glad for you when you told me you were going to retire, but then part of me was really glad for me, too. Because I have lived in your shadow ever since I got on City Council, because my own mother continuously tells me, Dave is her favorite councilman, and be as good as Dave, Frank. Let me rephrase that, Frankie. Okay? But I wish you nothing but the best, and you, sir, have taught me so much about the ins and outs here, and I just wish you long life and health, and I am just really happy for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just to add to that, and I know I'm not saying we're going to go all the way around the room, but I do want to thank you for helping me as council president, because I had some extremely big shoes to fill when I took this position. And, you know, with your leadership, Dave, I really appreciate everything that you've done. And I'm looking forward to carrying on some of the stuff, you know, having conversations about continuing Feed the Needy, which I think we need to do that. Obviously, it's not going to happen due to COVID-19, possibly this year, and the Delta and stuff like that, but there are some great programs that I think we do need to continue that was, that you were very influential with starting. But I'd just like to thank you for your leadership, and thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Member Hawke.
David, it'd be very short. Thank you, sir, for all you've done. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Member Mariel.
I just want to say, kind of echo what Bill said, as Ward Councilpeople go, it doesn't get any better than Dave Dockerty. And as Clerk of Council, you did that job equally as good. So thank you for helping us, making sure that we were all successful, and showing the way that a Ward Councilperson is supposed to, to do this job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional remarks? All right, moving on with the agenda, Mr. Clerk, Resolution Number 25.
Honorary naming of Harrison Avenue from Seventeenth Street Northwest to I-77 Bridge as McDaniel's Way.
Leader.
Yeah, I know. Mr. President, I move we adopt Informal Resolution Number 25.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Informal Resolution Number 25. Are there any remarks?
Mr. President.
Member Mariel.
Could we have that read, please?
Clerk.
Informal resolution respectfully submitted by John Mariel, Ward Seven Councilmember, on this twenty-third day of August 2021, whereas council has then received a communication two-seventy-one from John Mariel, Ward Seven Councilmember, requesting that council recognize coaches Josh McDaniel, Tom McDaniel, and Ben McDaniel by the honorary naming of Harrison Avenue Northwest from Seventeenth Street Northwest to the I-77 Bridge as McDaniel's Way Northwest. And whereas Josh McDaniel, Kent McKinley High School graduate and six-time Super Bowl winner, is making a sizable financial contribution to the long overdue construction of Marion Motley statue, allowing project to proceed. He is a QB coach and offensive coordinator for New England Patriots, and is a six-time Super Bowl champion. Whereas Tom McDaniel was a longtime head coach at Kent McKinley High School. He led the team to fourteen wins in 1997, as the Bulldogs won the Division One State Championship, and were recognized as the national champions. Whereas Ben McDaniel is a former McKinley quarterback who won back-to-back state championships, playing with future Ohio State legends Mike Doss and Kenny Peterson, is a coach for the Houston Texans. He also coached professionally for the Broncos, Bears, and Buccaneers. Whereas council is in agreement with Member Mariel that coaches Josh McDaniel, Tom McDaniel, and Ben McDaniel have made a significant impact on the game of football, as well as the City of Canton, and wishes to honor their achievements. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of Canton City Council, commend and honor the contributions of coaches Josh McDaniel, Tom McDaniel, and Ben McDaniel by the honorary naming of Harrison Avenue Northwest from Seventeenth Street Northwest to the I-77 Bridge, through the placement of informational signs labeled as McDaniel's Way Northwest. Mr. President.
Are there any additional remarks? Hearing none by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 25 is adopted. Member Mariel.
On behalf of Canton City Council, it is a great honor to present this to you. You have had such a storied career at McKinley High School, um, and to have not only one but two kids coaching at the highest level, a six-time Super Bowl champion. And on top of that, the importance of honoring Marion Motley. Um, your son Josh made a sizable financial contribution that, quite frankly, that statue would not be happening if it wasn't for his donation. It is long overdue that you have, um, a street named after your, uh, family. And moving forward, as people pass the great Marion Motley and head to the hall to see the greats of the game, they will be walking on a street named after one of Canton's great families. So it's a great honor to give this to you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mariel, President of Council, the council members, Mayor Bernaby. Uh, on behalf of the McDaniel's family, I want to extend, uh, our deepest appreciation. The, the best professional decision that I ever made was to leave the comforts of Orville, Ohio as an assistant football coach and come to Canton in nineteen eighty to work for Terry Forbes, to teach English at McKinley High School, and to coach football. The best decision that I ever made for my family, uh, we came in eighty, and, and we had three young children, and like a lot of people, you know, our life was pretty modest, and, and we lived in a duplex in one of the suburbs, but at, at, at some point in time, very soon after nineteen eighty-two, when I was named the head coach, we moved our family into the City of Canton. We lived on Eighteenth Street. Uh, I wanted my kids to, to attend the Canton City Schools. I wanted them to be part of the Canton City community. And, and they're not just the sons of, of Tom and Chris McDaniel, but they are the sons of Canton. Uh, the Canton influence, uh, from grade school through the middle school system, through the high school system, has, has impacted them significantly, uh, in major ways. And, uh, my oldest son, uh, Jason, uh, Janet Creighton hired him for the, uh, to work in the, the county auditor's office, and he remains there to this day. Uh, and, and the two other boys followed that into the coaching ranks, and obviously, you know, what they've accomplished far surpasses anything that, that I've been able to do. I've received a lot of individual recognition in my life that was actually the result of the work of many. Uh, and, and this is just another example of that. Um, there are tons of people that I, I should thank, and, 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 uh, and I will in due time, specifically Jim Harris and John Rinaldi, um, both of whom worked for me starting in the mid-eighties and were never compensated for what they did. Uh, but they became part of the McKinley football program in their way, one in an equipment capacity, the other in a, in a, in a, in a athletic trainer, a medical capacity. Uh, but, you know, I'm standing here in large part because of, of what they did for me. They represent all of those players and all of those assistant coaches, uh, who, who allowed me to get individual recognition like this. This is a family accomplishment, and we are deeply grateful. We are very proud of, of the time we spent in Canton, and we are, we are very, very grateful for this particular proclamation, for this particular recognition. Thank you so very, very much.
Authorizing direct safety director to open one or more purchase orders in total amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents for retro fit of equipment and installation of one ladder truck via Suffolk Corporations for the Fire Department.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 26.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Informal Resolution Number 26. Are there any remarks? Hearing none by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 26 is adopted. Resolution Number 27, please.
Authorizing direct service director to open one or more purchase orders in total amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars for purchase of Ford Escape from Liberty Ford Lincoln Canton LLC for Community Development Department.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 27.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Informal Resolution Number 27. Are there any remarks? Hearing none by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 27 is adopted. Resolution Number 28, please.
Authorizing direct service director to open one or more purchase orders in total amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars to Coon Restoration and Seal and Sync for repair of Central Plaza North.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 28.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Informal Resolution Number 28. Are there any remarks? Hearing none by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 28 is adopted. We are now under Communications. Let the Journal show that all communications are received as read. We are now under ordinances and formal resolutions for their first reading. Mr. Clerk, would you please begin with ordinance number one?
An ordinance authorizing mayor-director public safety to enter into parking incentive agreement with parts of realty team Howard Hanna, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Number two, an ordinance authorizing mayor-director public service to enter into purchase agreement with downtown Canton Land Bank, an amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and fifty thousand issued thirteen comprehensive plan funds for the purchase of the Nationwide Building, enter into a service agreement with the Canton Community Improvement Corp. Utilize issued thirteen comprehensive plan funds, an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars in order for the CIC to provide all necessary carrying costs associated with the building, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance and community economic development. Number three, an ordinance managing appropriation warrants, number forty-nine, twenty-twenty-one, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Number four, an ordinance authorizing mayor-director public service to advertise seed bids award and enter into contract for the sale of city-owned real property no longer needed for municipal purposes, located in Stark County Auditor Parcel Number two-twenty-six-five-thirty, and to enter into all contracts necessary to facilitate said sale, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance, public property capital improvement. Number five, an ordinance authorizing mayor-director public service to extend sanitary sewer agreements with Stark County and/or North Canton on a month-to-month basis, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to environment, public utilities, and finance. Mr. President.
This time the Chair would declare an in-house recess for environmental and public utilities and finance committees. The meeting regards to ordinance number five on your agenda this evening. You are now in recess.
It's seven thirty, and this is a joint committee meeting of environmental and public utilities and finance. Uh, ordinance number five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or director of public service to extend the sanitary sewer agreements, Stark County and/or North Canton, on a month-to-month basis, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Council, um, thank you for the first reading consideration of this ordinance. Um, effectively, what we're asking to do here is presently, both with Stark County and with North Canton, um, kind of the, the agreements that oversee, uh, billing, uh, of the, of the sewer system to Stark County and North Canton, and, um, uh, and other related issues, connections, things of that nature, uh, they are presently about forty-six years old. Uh, the way the previous agreements drafted in nineteen seventy-four worked, uh, they were set to enter into and renew for an additional ten years, uh, if we didn't do anything with the agreement. So, uh, well over a year ago, the City and-- So, well over a year ago, the city and kind of the folks on the sewer end of things took a look at these, and for those who have been here a while, you've seen kind of the supplemental agreements come through for various sewer projects over the years. These things are like a volume in themselves. They're just massive cumbersome agreements. So, with that in mind and under the reality that these hadn't been really assessed on a long-term basis for some time, we made the decision, which we had to do one year prior to expiration, we made the decision to cancel the two agreements and work with Stark County and North Canton on the agreements to look at various issues and to hopefully have a simpler, more user-friendly agreement and to deal with some of the other issues that it's time to kind of take a look at. So, discussions with both parties are going well, but obviously, anytime you're doing something that is 46 years in the making, it is important to be accurate and to get it right. We are close to having finalized agreements and moving forward with full agreements, I believe. Like I said, all parties are working well. However, we're not going to be there by September 5th, which is the expiration date. So, what I'm asking for with this particular ordinance is to give us the ability to go month-to-month with both Stark County and with North Canton while we work through finalizing the agreements. So, hopefully, in the next several weeks, the intent would be to come down with new agreements while we work out some of these finer details on these. So, this would just be to go month-to-month extensions as needed until we finalize the process.
Questions or concerns? Hearing none, it is 7:32 and we will sign this off.
Council is reconvening after the recess. Leader.
Mr. President, I move we suspend Rule 22A to place ordinance number five back on this evening's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend Rule 22A to place ordinance number five back on this evening's agenda. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smuckler, Babcock, Shawman, Hawk, Kimbrough, Scaglione, Smith, Fisher, Hall, Merrill, Ferguson, Morris, 12 yeas, Mr. President.
The motion carries, and ordinance number five is a legal part of your agenda. Leader.
Mr. President, I move we suspend the statutory rules of ordinance number five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the statutory rules on ordinance number five. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Shawman.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglione.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
12 yeas, Mr. President.
Leader, you've heard the three readings.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number five. Are there any remarks under this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Shawman.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglione.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
12 yeas, Mr. President.
Leader, you've heard the three readings. Leader.
Mr. President, I move we suspend the statutory rules of ordinance number 12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the statutory rules on ordinance number 12. Are there any remarks? Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 12. Are there any remarks? Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 12. Are there any remarks? Leader.
Mr. President, I move we amend ordinance number 12 per the copy that is before every council member.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend ordinance number 12 per the copy before each of you. Are there any remarks? Hearing none by voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 12 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 12 as amended. Are there any remarks under this ordinance as amended? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Shawman.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglione.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
12 yeas, Mr. President.
The motion carries, you've heard the three readings. Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 12. Are there any remarks? Leader.
Mr. President, I move we amend ordinance number 12 per the copy that is before every council member.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend ordinance number 12 per the copy before each of you. Are there any remarks? Hearing none by voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 12 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 12 as amended. Are there any remarks under this ordinance as amended? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Shawman.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglione.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
12 yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries, and ordinance number 13 is adopted. We're now under ordinances and formal resolutions for their third final reading and vote. Mr. Clerk, would you please begin with ordinance number 13?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor or director of public service to enter into contract change order number one with Arcadis in the amount not to exceed $54,302 for the water distribution system hydraulic model to perform transient modeling and evaluation of amending appropriation ordinance number 49, 2021, declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 13.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 13. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Shawman.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglione.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
12 yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries, and ordinance number 13 is adopted. Ordinance number 14, please.
An ordinance approving a Canton City water main extension to Advent Lutheran Church authorizing the mayor or director of public service to enter into any agreements necessary for the extension of said water main declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 14.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 14. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Shawman.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglione.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
12 yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries, and ordinance number 14 is adopted. Orderance number 15, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor or director of public service to advertise C-Bid award and enter into construction contract, execute professional services contract for construction engineering services, enter into work license/ easement agreement with Wheeling Lake Area Railway Company for the Allen Avenue Southeast area sanitary sewer and water line project GP 1332, enter into an agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency to receive a low interest loan for the sanitary sewer portion of the project, authorizing the auditor established a 5445 Allen Avenue sanitary sewer project GP 1332 fund amending appropriation ordinance number 49, 2021, authorizing the auditor to pay all moral obligations for contract change orders and declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 15.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Shawman.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglione.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Merrill.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
12 yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries, and ordinance number 15 is adopted. We're now under announcement at committee meetings, and our next meeting date will be September 13th at 6:30 PM.
Mr. President.
Member Merrill.
Finance will meet September 13th, 6:30?
Yep.
Here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Merrill.
Mr. President.
Member Babcock.
Personnel will meet next Monday at 5 o'clock at the chambers here. That is the 30th, I think.
Yep. Thank you, Member Babcock. Capitol.
Public property capital improvement will meet same time, same place.
Thank you, Members Scaglione and Committee of Economic Development.
I'm going to find this. Meet same time.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Ferguson. We're now under miscellaneous business. Is there any miscellaneous business for this evening? Hearing none, I'm going to mix it up. I'm going to mix it up a little bit. Majority Leader, do you have something on miscellaneous business?
Two things. First thing, some of you have seen the results of the census, and much to my surprise, and I'm sure a lot of other members in here, we will not be losing a ward in this community that we held our own in the census, and we came in at over 70,000, so we will not have to redistrict to cut a ward out. However, due to people moving, properties being torn down, and other areas being filled, we will have to redraw boundaries. This will be done before the next election, and any input you may want to offer, my phone always rings, but we are under certain restrictions where we have to have each ward divided evenly. That's just for information right now. And for the record, what I said before, I want to be on the record, according to the law director, we cannot meet remotely until the state changes their laws. We need to be here on Monday nights to have your vote counted. We will do our best to distance people. I'm asking you all to please wear masks inside and to please cooperate with the new clerk of council. By the way, we'll be sworn in January 31st. I'm sorry, January, boy, I'm way back. Chris Smith, why didn't you jump on me? July 31st at 4:31.
August.
I don't even have my months right. August 31st. August 31st. I'm trying to backdate you, Dave.
Going for the trifecta.
Yeah. August 31st at 4:31 PM. Those that wish to attend, please be here on time because this should take exactly 60 seconds. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any additional comments under miscellaneous business for this evening? So, tonight, we're going to mix it up a little bit.